All right. It is seven oh four on Monday, October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Today, we actually have, if we have, um, we have at least one visitor. If we have a larger crowd, we thought we would have an extended visitor comment section as well to, uh, to talk about the school committee, what went wild, what did not go well, and what opportunities exist or what new things we should be thinking about. Uh, there's a, there's a meeting next door. Uh, we don't know whether anyone's gonna join us after that. So what we're gonna do, Seamus, I hope you don't mind, uh, we're gonna table this section, move on, and in a few minutes, if there's no one coming over, we'll just switch back to the visitors' comments.
Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you. The second one is our student rep report. Do we know where, does she abandon us? Does she not like us?
She loves us, um, but I will make sure, I will reach out to Stephen, uh, to find out the schedule.
Okay.
And because if she's on sports, she's involved in sports, soccer.
Okay.
It could be.
Yeah, it could be.
That's what the thing's up with her.
Yeah. I think we invited her actually to our October first meeting. And, um, then again, it's October first, maybe she didn't have a lot, but we talked to her the week before.
Exactly, so there's kind of this, so I will send Stephen an email.
It's fine, I mean, you know, just.
The next one will be November fifth.
There's a bug going around, there's sports, there's all that stuff. It's all good. Hopefully, we're not making this more complicated than it should be, and, you know, we're not confusing her. All right, so we'll pass that one as well. Oh, you actually had a separate item here, public comment on, I was thinking that the visitor section was gonna be it, okay. Uh, all, returning to old business, school committee goals, strategic goals, and superintendent goals.
So, um, you had requested last time, a draft of my goals, and so they are there.
Yep.
For review and feedback, um.
Did everybody get a chance to look at it? Any comments, questions on that?
Oops, I just opened the wrong one. Well, initially, I was just wondering if, if any of them needed to be any more specific. Not too specific, but you know what I mean?
It's always a fine line. It is, yes.
Um, but I was looking at specifically the, um, expand social emotional learning opportunities for students.
Right, so, um, I think it's more specific when you get into hashing out the timeline, and you have a baseline survey, and you have some data that then you could say, when we reas, when we resurvey, more students will report that they feel more connected to the school, or more connected to adults, or have more strategies to use in the classroom.
I, I had similar, I think, type question of, um, some of it, how, how are we gonna be able to measure some of this effectively? And what would constitute success when, when we got there, especially, I, I watched the YouTube video, and you mentioned how, um, at the last meeting, that they changed the MCAS testing over, so that might make some of that, some, um, you know, one of these goals a little bit difficult to measure.
Right. Right, so it's actually changing the meeting and exceeding expectations. The former language was, um, needs improvement, warning needs improvement proficient and advanced, so that there's already a difference in how we talk about the MCAS results, uh, for students, so.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think, uh, district improvement, the first bullet point, ensure a hundred percent of evaluations, that I think is specific enough. But the second one, establish a culture of innovation that allows the entire organization to engage in fearless learning. I mean, that's a pretty broad goal. You know, professional practice, those two are certainly measurable and easy enough. And just the social and emotional learning, um, increased number of students is pretty self-explanatory. I mean, that is certainly measurable. So, yeah, it was just those two for me.
That makes sense.
But again, I understand that, you know, it's, you wanna make it realistic.
Right.
And measurable at the same time.
Same comments on the specific and measurable. How these connect to the overall strategic plan, that would be good to see, so that, you know, we see how it's cascading. Because from you, it's gonna cascade to others and all that, so we can always keep that connection. And one suggestion, in addition to that, uh, I, I actually would want your goals to be bolder. So what I mean by that, you know, MCAS, we talked about, in fact, you know, uh, the article that you shared with us, uh, I read this weekend. You know, it's no longer about measuring something that is so, uh, cliche almost as MCAS or standardized tests and all that. It's, it's something that we need to do, but it doesn't really, we know, it doesn't really allow us to measure how much we are enriching the students' lives and education and everything else. So, if there is something, even if you consider it experimental or experiential for now, that will allow us to think differently, I would suggest, you know, feel free to do so. We just throw one or two of those things there as well, so we can see which direction the district is going through you, through your goals as well. Thank you for sharing, great start.
Right.
I think we all have opportunities when it comes to goals and objectives to really find the right mixture of things, and make them specific, measurable, and attainable and all that, right?
Right.
Smart, uh, goals. So, we're gonna have to probably have our own conversations as well, then, um, we can go back to this and see how we can.
And just, I, I feel like this may be the first time where the strategic plan is driving the district improvement goals, and the superintendent goals, and the principal goals, and it's gonna get a little mushy, you know, 'cause it is the first time.
Yeah.
And maybe, uh, a little patience, which I appreciate, um, but it will, uh, certainly, I think, help everyone understand how the strategic plan's driving the work. So, you know, yes, um, the, uh, culture of innovation, that's right out of the goal for the strategic plan, so having the leadership team talk about that, so that my goal is more clear, the district goal is more clear, and then the super, uh, the principals' goals are more clear, so there's alignment between them all.
And you said something about an article that, that.
Yeah.
Empowered.
It's in the, uh, in the folder.
Oh, maybe that's why I missed it.
The power of collective efficacy.
Oh, no, I read that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Interesting stuff.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes, I like that article.
Yeah.
Is this something that is shared broadly, that you shared with us, or?
I shared it with you, um, so, um, when I see things like that, that substantiate the work that we're doing in the district, so, for example, we're implementing instructional leadership teams, which is teacher empowered leadership, and people say, well, why are you doing that? Because the research is saying that that has a huge benefit on the culture and student achievement in classrooms and in schools. So, um, that will be part of our discussion at a training of ILTs that will take a look at that and say, this is why. Um, there's a whole research base on collective teacher efficacy, um, that is really meaningful and impactful for, for a lot of reasons, um, but for teachers, um, given the environment that we're, we're working in right now.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it kinda seems like common sense, you know, teachers want more.
But again, to go back to the goals, you have an accountability system that is data-driven, you know, categorized. You gotta fit into these, you know, all of these pigeonholes, and then, yet, we want schools to be innovative and places of real engagement and motivation for kids, so we're always like, and where, where teachers can step in and voice what they're hoping for, um, and create, then I think that's where the two start to come together. Because there's no doubt, if teachers have high degrees of efficacy, then student achievement on any standardized test can go up. Not that the test is the end-all be-all, but we still are measured by that test.
Yeah.
And the school is held accountable, and the district is held accountable to that, to that test, and those results.
First, the, you know, we're just switching to this now, but the important thing here is that could work into your goals as well. When you read just one article that has only a few pages, it makes it look like if you pull this trigger, this is gonna happen.
Yeah.
And the challenge is, how, you know, how, how do you get to the point where these things start happening?
Right.
And there is some mention of, you know, cultural shift and trust and all that, and it takes a lot of investment, a lot of reinforcement and reiteration, so that everybody really understands that we're not paying loop service to it, but we're really mean it when, you know, uh, we're talking about those concepts. Uh, maybe some, some of that could work into your goals as well. 'Cause this is not something that's gonna, that happens overnight.
Right.
If it happens sooner than later, that's great, but, you know, evidence shows that it doesn't happen overnight. So what are some of those little, um, little triggers that, you know, you may be able to, uh, pull to, to slowly get to, to this? But it was nice, thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other comments on the goals? So what we need to do, really need to refine our own goals as well.
Right.
So maybe we'll use that, yours, as a, as a working draft for now, until we finalize ours, and then we can.
Put them out altogether, yeah?
Yeah. And our, ours will be specific to the committee, so how we function, what else we can do and all that. It doesn't necessarily have to drive the entirety of your goals. Your goals are driven by the strategic plan, right? Because you're, uh, but if there's any, any connection between what we wanna do as a committee and what you would like to do, maybe one of them can kinda, uh, sip into your, your goals as well. By which time, your goals will be a twelve-page document, but, yeah.
That's what we don't want.
Yeah, you know.
Forty-seven eight by ten, probably classy photos.
No, no, no.
In a cutout.
What Deanna's saying, she doesn't have a lot of time.
No, that is not what I'm saying.
No, a lot of time with us, that's what I'm saying. You want something that is specific enough that can be realized at least to a degree, so you can enjoy it, right?
Yes, and we all, and we all understand that, um, you know, people have very short attention spans, so we don't wanna be looking at twelve-page documents.
Yes, I'm definitely one of those people, so.
Don't wait till you get my next draft.
So I will, uh, again, uh, go back in a different direction, because I realize that I skipped the consent agenda altogether.
Yes, you did.
And I skipped the top part. So, uh, did anybody get a chance to read our minutes, which was the only item in the consent agenda?
And, uh, yes, and I thank you for clarifying that piece there about, um, class sizes. That is very specific, and I very much appreciate that.
Kathy went back and watched the tape again.
Yeah, and I would, honestly, that actually, I would like to see more of that, when it comes to any specific changes that we make, or, um, I don't know, I guess, charges that we might give you, directives. I, I would like to see more specifics in the minutes.
Okay.
Just for my own, 'cause sometimes I go back to the minutes myself, and they're helpful for me.
The, the one, I agree, was pretty detailed, um, documentation of our minutes. One thing that I wanted to make sure, I wasn't misunderstanding and didn't, uh, go on record that way. There was a section about, um, as we're measuring the, um, the impact of smaller class size, that there was gonna be some, uh, in, some connection survey with the teacher, it said. And I did not know whether that was the new teacher, the, you know, new class that was, uh, opened, or we, whether we meant all of the sixth grade teachers, and then the fifth grade teachers, so we can do the comparison, and, okay. So, there was a motion, right, to approve the consent agenda?
No, but there will be now.
Okay, please.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, questions, comments, edits, for minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I had a couple of questions in addition, uh, about those. So the first one is, when will the surveys and interviews that we're talking about will take place?
Yep.
The timing of it? And the other one is, um, can we reach out to other districts that are investigating the same subject? We talked about it on Friday, Belcher Town, apparently, at the same time, started talking about class size, and they wanted more data to determine how it was affecting their school, and what it meant for their educational aspirations. Almost the same time, apparently, we're talking about the same things without knowing that we were talking about, so it's pretty good.
You know, when I went back to that Sentinel article, it looks as though they already voted on it.
Yeah, they did.
They did.
Yeah. They did.
So.
So I'm wondering how they got to that point? You know, if they didn't.
They did not really have a policy, but they voted to come up with a policy, that's, that's how I understood the, the article.
Oh, and then, then I need to read it again, because the way I read it was, they came with specific numbers.
Okay, maybe, I misunderstood too, then it's, it's good, then it's better, just we should probably.
In the article.
Yeah.
So that was my question. I, I wonder how they came up with these numbers.
It would be good to know. I mean, not only them, but if anybody else, uh, I, I think I shared some of the other school districts from the eastern side mostly, that publicize.
Right.
Uh, their approach to determining class size and what it means to them. It would be interesting to find out what, what they are considering as the analyst.
Right.
Cool.
Um, so we have a district leadership team tomorrow, and that is on the agenda, which is, um, how to, uh, create the student, um, interviews without being overly, um, interfering, inter, uh, that's not the right word, it's not the right, intrusive. Yes, into the classroom and pulling them out of learning, and so talking to the principals about the best way to create that survey in that time, 'cause with students, interviewing is probably gonna be the best way, um, to get, um, uh, some of their thoughts. Uh, and then also the teachers, um, talking about the best way to get, uh, that result from them, so.
Right, uh, going back to our old business, enrollment.
So, um. Before I misspeak, um. I had that number at the top of my.
Was there a document that you?
I did not, so, and here's why. Um, so, we keep internal, um, data sheets on, uh, enrollment. Uh, those were not updated for this month yet, um, so those are internal that the admin assistants are keeping. Then, um, Kathy has, um, her set of data that she keeps, um, and then third, there is what we report to the state. So we just finished reporting to the state, um, October first, um, but there are always problems with the data, and the data gets sort of, um, uh, slowed down, and errors are sent back to us to fix. A good example is if someone keystrokes a zip code improperly for a school choice student, and the school choice student is coming from, say, Brockton, they'll flag that and say, that student can't possibly be a school choice student if they're commuting an hour and a half to your school. So there's, you know, a handful of those that we have to go through, so we're in the middle of that process. Uh, so once we're done with that, then we'll have the three sets of data to share. Right now, total, what we reported, uh, was seven hundred and thirty-nine students. Um, that was the SIMS report. Um, but our job is to make sure that what the admin assistants and what Kathy has match that. Um, so then we know that our internal systems are correct.
Do we know what the, uh, split is?
Um.
Between the buildings?
I have, if you give me one second. Is it three ninety-five? I was gonna say three ninety-four, but three ninety-five here. Oh, new, see, I wouldn't know that.
So that's actually higher than what you anticipated on September tenth, by five students.
The only reason I know that is 'cause one of my friends that I walked, he didn't know, and we asked.
How many students, again? Three ninety-five? Can't do something else.
And I have three ninety-four from Mr. Latoy this afternoon. So we got a new one today.
Well, it's, and first of all, we're being quiet, but it's something to celebrate, because, you know, we did not end last year at, with these numbers. Uh, we're, now forty students, probably more, based on what you're saying, that we have a new, uh, student arriving, so those are all good things. Even though during, over the course of last year, we had a few students moving in town, and they were coming in. Um, hopefully, this is a trend that continues in a healthy way, so it's something to, uh, to celebrate. One, one thing, since I, I've been on the committee, that I probably have to say every year, and I will say again. The fact that the state, the districts, and everybody else seems to have at least a level of confusion about how many students they have in their districts, in their schools, is really something that I can't comprehend that easily. 'Cause the way, you know, I think about it, maybe, uh, too simplistically, there are so many students that come into any district that the districts are responsible on, right? But at the end of the day, you know, everybody seems to have, uh, you know, possibly different number, and, um, numbers change, they have to tweak zip codes and this and that, and, you know, by the time we get to the end of the year, we just find out how many students. So my typical question was, how do we do attendance?
Right.
Right? I mean, if you don't know that, that student was supposed to be in our classroom, or was not supposed to be in our classroom, how do we know these things, that we can really keep attendance? And, um, I still don't know that I have the answer.
Right, so what we keep in Reddicker, which is our student database, um, are all of the students by homeroom whose seats are in the classroom. So when we rostered, um, the main office, the principal, the classrooms are all well aware of who's in front of them. Where we start to get some of the, um, errors, if you will, are the students that maybe received services from us, but aren't enrolled with us. So there are homeschooled students that get reported in SIMS, but they don't have a seat in a classroom. And so that's sometimes where we start to get the flags coming back and saying, well, you're, you know, our numbers are seven thirty-nine right now, but there's actually seven forty-seven that are getting, you know, submitted to SIMS. So there's some unique situations like that. Some situations around out of district placement, so, um, that's where I think some of the, the, what is reported in Reddicker isn't exactly what we see, but teachers absolutely know who's in their classroom, um, like for a fire drill, for example.
Yeah.
So how do we do that with the high school? Because there is no home room anymore, seventh through twelfth.
First period.
There's first period, but, don't, the, do the, um, like with the enrichment, with the seventh and eighth graders, their periods switch up. So is it, um, 'cause I just find it interesting, like on the, um, progress reports, that, um, my daughter's attendance is diff, is varied by class. You know, it, it doesn't always total up to total number of absentee and things like that, so.
Right, so teachers are, at the middle school and high school are taking period attendance, so, um, and that has to do with credit hours, um, minutes in your seat in a classroom. So if a student, for example, is dismissed early, um, they'll get credit for half the day, but then they may be marked absent in the last part of their day. If they go to the guidance, and they're not there in the classroom, then they may get, you know, marked absent for that piece.
Like for the first day of school, her schedule was changed, and so she went to, she took a class twice, and, you know, so it just, I was like, how do, you know, when you say the attendance thing, it's, um, I just worry, you know, is there a way to actually capture that, you know? 'Cause if she, if she comes in late, and she's marked absent in her first thing, so if the, who's got the fire drill attendance? If she, you know, hadn't, uh, or any student comes, you know, comes in and out, how do you know?
So it's so important for parents to sign in, and students to sign in, because that is exactly what happens. So if there's a fire drill at ten, then the main office has the sign-in and the sign-out for students and staff. And so you will often hear on the walkie-talkie, um, in a classroom, in a period classroom, you'll often say, I am missing Sarah Jones. And the main office will, you know, um, talk back, or speak back through the microphone, uh, through the, uh, walkie-talkie and say, no, Sarah Jones was dismissed at ten. And so that's how we navigate, um, those very unique circumstances, where students or staff may be out of the building.
All right.
Or out of a period of attendance, yeah.
So I got a few questions. These new additional students, like, I guess, four or five, are those school choice or Granby residents?
My, my understanding is they're mainly resident enrollments.
'Cause I think somebody's probably gonna ask that question at some point.
Yep.
I'm looking at the sheet, and maybe I'm, I'm wrong in doing this, but it was the one that was handed out in September, and it had our anticipated enrollment at seven hundred and three, seven hundred and thirty-nine now.
Yep.
Is like a five percent increase, right? Do we have anything else we have to worry about besides that sixth grade teacher, or that?
Not at this point. I think what we are aware of are the requests that came. Um, the data manager, um, is becoming a more prominent need, um, because of all of the infrastructure here, that's huge. Um, so you will most likely be hearing from us soon, um, that that continues to be a need in the district. I think, um, what I'm hearing is that the need for increased guidance, um, uh, a slight increase, perhaps at the junior, senior high school, um, but an addition, um, of guidance here at, at.
Guidance or adjustment counselors?
There is no guidance counselor here, um, at East Meadow. There is a social worker. Um, and I think the thought is, is that a guidance counselor could help manage some of the caseload of bringing families together and, and providing the wraparound services that would coordinate the social worker, and perhaps the school resource officer, and, um, I think do, um, a lot of the parent outreach, um, and be that first level of response for students.
So, somebody who is trained as a guidance counselor, or somebody who's trained in more?
Well, we're just talking about it, so I think, um, what we had heard was that Governor Baker's excess, um, uh, funds from FY eighteen, were gonna be released in the form of a grant for, um, social emotional support in schools. And so we got really excited about that potential, um, and really thinking about the strategic plan, and, um, how, what a great fit that was going to be. Um, but the more we're hearing now from the superintendent, it doesn't look like that money is gonna come. So, um, again, it's something that we're gonna go back to the table and, and think about, um, but we're just talking about it now. But you asked, are there unanticipated needs? I think that's probably two of them.
Well, one of my concerns is, is last year, we had an increase of students throughout the school year too, and at some point, something's gonna have to give, I would think, because we're already five percent over what we, we anticipated, and our numbers are so low that it doesn't take many to, to make it an even higher percentage.
I think with the three teachers at every grade level, there is room for the five percent. Where we get into the sticky wickets are where there are the two teachers per grade level.
And how many of those are there?
Correct me if I'm wrong, fourth and fifth.
And are these, is the five percent spread over all grades, or is it mostly in East Meadow, or, I mean, like, mostly East Meadow?
It's mostly East Meadow.
Okay.
I ju, I just wanna make sure that we're more in front of things that.
Right.
Need, need adjustment, uh, this year, than we were last year, and, and actually get in front of the town if we have to.
Right.
That's where I'm going, so.
I know the numbers you're talking about, but I think our most recent conversations were closer to these numbers when we last chatted about potential enrollment than seven oh three. That was.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were more like.
Well, that's on the sheet.
Seven twenty-seven.
Right, but you know, that, those have been changing. You're absolutely right, early on, yeah.
I do get that, but I know back in June, when we voted on the budget, that, that's what was approved for, and at some point, we might have to.
As of that day.
Add another teacher, and I don't, you know, we would have to have a discussion with the town before we went that route.
I'm actually more concerned about the social emotional. Sorry.
Say it again.
I said, I'm.
I said, I'm, I, I, I'm having more concerns about the social emotional needs as, as the attendance um or the population starts to increase.
With forty more students at the elementary school, I think that's the discussion, you know, Bill and I will be having, you know, over the next couple of weeks.
And adjustment counselors and guidance counselors are trained very differently. And I, you know, that's just my two cents, I would be leaning more towards an adjustment counselor than any sort of a guidance counselor.
So I, so I think that was also part of the question I was asking too, it's not just the teachers. I'm looking at, it's like overall, like is there any more equipment, any more stuff that we need to buy that we weren't anticipating having to buy?
Right, you mean like curriculum, materials and supplies, things like that? Right, um, not at this point, um. Most of the curriculum was purchased at a time when there were three classrooms at every grade level. So you'll hear like a teacher that maybe is a preschool teacher now, but was a kindergarten teacher in the past, you know, digging into the closet and going, well, here's the kind, here's that third kindergarten set of materials and supplies. So we haven't heard that there's been a need or request um that we haven't been able to uh handle within uh the building line items at this point.
Thank you, everybody. Um, the roof project.
So uh, there'll be a contractor on site tomorrow to um do a, a walk around with John Sullivan. The plan for right now is to repair um the entire roof that covers the gym. Um, and then get going on what it's gonna take to, to repair the full roof in spring, summertime, whenever that may be. So they're gonna do a quick fix on the entire roof, they're not gonna look for leaks or anything like that, they're just gonna repair the whole roof.
On the gym.
On the gym. And then, yes, on the gym. And then in the spring, summertime, whatever that timeframe is to repair the entire roof, that, that will, the entire roof, including what they repaired over the gym, will be repaired completely. So for right now, the quick fix is just repair the entire gym roof. Um, hopefully it's a quick and it will solve the problem for now. But we'll know more, uh, I would say later on this week.
And uh, I'm assuming we're beyond the repair in the spring, it's more gonna be replacement of the roof?
Yeah, sorry, so yeah, replay, yeah, 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 yes, sorry.
Yes. Yeah, that's good. Um, alright, so what, uh, what is the timing of that fix?
So that'll be once they're on tomorrow and I guess take a look at exactly, I'm gonna say size and what's needed. That will be as soon as possible, um, but the town, Chris and John are taking care of that. But I'll get more information as, as we go.
Do you know if there will be a committee for this project?
Uh, yeah, I would assume um for the entire roofing project, yes, I don't think just for the temporary fix over the gym.
So that will be considered separate from?
Yes, yes.
Can we confirm that on the, on the, on the roof committee?
Yes, I can, yes.
If you don't mind, just because um there's been a lot of questions around, do you need a, a roof committee? And if we do, then that's something that we need to start pulling together over the, over the winter.
So it, it wouldn't be us doing it, which is, which is the, not the problem, but it's the town. So I can do as much as I can do to stay on them about all that stuff, which I will. Um, but we really don't have any say into it, except around scheduling the repair, if it's gonna interfere with school, summer school, et cetera, so. Yes, I will, I will.
I would like to understand the process. That way, we can follow up with um, you know, intelligent questions throughout the winter. If we have some kind of a timeline. Um, I don't think that's unreasonable to expect.
It's not, but the focus right now is to at least just repair the, the roof over the gym. So there's no more cancellation of games or, or anything like that, no more damage, uh, most importantly. Um, and then they're gonna reconvene and.
Um, I'm gonna ask again, cause I've been hung up on it, but because this is a temporary fix and then they're gonna have to take it off and redo in the spring, is the funding still going to be there? Like, will we still have enough?
Yes, I, 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 I don't, actually I don't know, I don't know yes or no, but it's, it's, that's the town side of it. I can, again, follow up and we can do our due diligence to make sure, but it's, it's, that part of it is really out of our control, it, it's, it's the town. I'm assuming since we provided Chris with the go ahead to, to start work on the roof and now we're at least at phase one of temporary repair, that the, the funding is either there or will be there once we get to, you know, the full repair process.
For.
But, but we just have to understand it's not our.
Funding is already there.
Yeah, it's not our money.
Town meeting, the town meeting already appropriated the amount and all that. Whether or not you're asking, you know, the, the.
Well, there's gonna be, cause now there's going to be price, you know, X amount of dollars for a temporary fix, which is not what we, you know, the one point four was based off quotes to do the entire roof at one.
There were some preliminary quotes, but there were not any.
So right, so this is where, where I'm hung up on this and I keep asking every time we talk about it is, we have this magic number of one point four, right? But now, we're using part of that one point four for a temporary fix. So in my mind, temporary fix means they're going to put some kind of sheathing, something on so that we don't have a water issue in the gym for the winter months, fantastic, I love it. However, they're going to then come back in the spring and remove the temporary part, which is going to cost additional dollars. In addition, dollars means more dollars than was originally looked at for the whole roof number of one point four. And what I'm afraid of is that we're going to be in the same situation that we are perpetually in is we are going, we're going to have exceeded our one point four amount. And then my concern is where do we go from there? Like, we don't want to run out and not have the whole roof hung up. So, I mean, I, I understand I'm still new to this and I get hung up on the wrong things, but I'm trying to figure it out as I go. So I don't want it to be another problem where everyone's like, what are we talking about? We ran out of money, why aren't we getting a roof? When I know I sat in town meeting and I raised my hand and I voted through this one point four million. And then to be find out, well, this one point four million was kind of a number that was pulled out of the air. Like, we don't, the one point four million didn't sign us up for anything. It was an amount of money that was appropriated, but there was no contract, there was no person signed up, there was none of that. So that's where I'm, I'm going with it, when I keep bringing this up, I'm trying to figure out, you know, how do we know that this is enough? And now we're doing temporary and we're coming back and they're gonna come back and do work again. And, and you know, when I, I've had work done in my house, they do a temporary fix and they come back, I'm paying more cause I did something temporary and they come back and take it out and do it over.
So, so we, we don't, we weren't really part of that discussion.
Yeah, I know, but we.
When they picked the number, um, but my understanding is that was based on quotes that Chris Martin had received on the, on the side. It could be up to around that amount.
But that was for one fix, not for a temporary fix and then a redo fix.
Don't really know what that was really.
Yeah, so I think there are multiple assumptions, your question is, is a fair question, but I think there are multiple questions. One is, I think the first point that you made, that the amount that was appropriated was really based on a final quote. And it's not, and typically for this size of project, i- i- it never is. It's just an approximation to make sure that we are within an amount that will not be short, as you're saying. Um, the other side of it is what Adam mentioned earlier that with these, uh, the roof committee and everything else, the administration of that project will be outside our, our control anyway. We just have that relationship in terms of timing, what constraints it may bring to uh some of the functions that we have in our schools. But in terms of the financials, the town appropriated the money, we don't know what the repair means, honestly, and it may, it may be part of a, 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 a comprehensive plan that will say this, you know, this is what we were gonna do anyway, regardless of what it is. I mean, we don't know that uh Janu- what is it, June thirtieth to the uh first day of school, there was no guarantee that the whole project was gonna be uh done. I'm, you know, if we wanna really talk about uh possibilities based on assumptions, I think we're gonna go in the direction of speculation because we don't know. So that's why we have these folks coming to the school tomorrow and let's find out what they have to say. Um, I'm hoping and I'm pretty sure your concerns will be raised by, you know, folks who will be part of that walkthrough and then when they discuss it with uh contractors. And then we'll find out what that uh committee means and what the timeline is around that, how quickly things will happen. So I will, I will hold my optimism and then I will expect uh to hear from Adam next time. But I, I, I am on the other side, hopeful that since we kicked it off, things will start coming together. It's, it wasn't matter of really uh aligning the timing with the town so that it could, it could go ahead.
But I too am kinda fearful of the May and June town meeting, based on what.
Right, well, I mean, it just, it's, it's not like it's the first time it's happened to us, you know, like, oh, let's do this, we have money. Oh, no, actually, we're just kidding, we don't really.
That is true, but you know, let me just, if, if we're gonna, you know, make assumptions, I would love to make the assumption that it's not gonna be one point four million dollars and we're gonna have a better conversation.
I'd like to figure out how many, the assumption will be that when we get the roof, magically underneath, it's gonna be like, you know, unicorns and, and everything. Have everything that we want underneath the brand new roof, right?
Unicorns may not be good for the roof, but.
So I will provide us, um. As long as everyone's done. At the, at the next meeting as to how tomorrow, I'm assuming weather permitting, I don't know what the weather is, but I'm assuming they're not going up there in the pouring rain to, to look at the roof. Maybe they will, cause they might wanna see actually where it's leaking, but I will provide an update at the next meeting as to how that turned out.
And can we agree that um it's reasonable to expect a timeline from, from Chris?
I think we agreed from day one that that was, that was the expectation that we were gonna find out about the timeline. In fact, the whole thing that started this uh dialogue with the town was our attempt to understand what the timeline was so that we could arrange summer programs and all that stuff.
So that's what we have a bigger role. Right, I mean, we have a bigger role in the timeline compared to the financials, we, we, we can't get into that, but the timeline really is up to us. Um, but let's get step one of this process out of the way and then we can go from there.
I don't mean the timeline for the actual roof, I mean the timeline for the process. What process is involved in repairing the roof? And how, you know, when is that gonna be done and the process for actually replacing it? You know, I wanna know what's involved, I wanna know what steps are involved before we even get to the roof replacement.
And, and I'm kinda wondering if we're gonna have to move students someplace else, if they're gonna replace a roof, that means you're gonna have to take a section of the roof off at least at a time and then put a new one down and how, how that works.
I will ask us uh not to, not to speculate to the point that now we are potentially giving folks some, you know, idea that something is about to happen. That's why we have this walkthrough, that's why we're gonna have people doing it. If, if anything changes, then we'll expect to hear from you, Adam, and so we can discuss it. Closing student activity accounts.
Yep, so there's a, a memo in the uh share file for you guys to take a look at. And all this is um legally, per master general law, the school committee has to vote on closing out student activity accounts that have um, have been in- inactive for um periods of time. We've done our due diligence to reach out to the treasures of these accounts. Um, and to no avail, we haven't heard anything back. So um, on that memo, you see on the top, there's student activity accounts that we're gonna transfer to other accounts, that money that's there. Um, and they're the gay, straight alliance, um, reso, school apparel and a field trip account. Um, so all of those except for the field trip account, those balances will be um transferred to the principal's holding account um, at the junior, senior high school. And then the field trip account will be transferred, it's only twenty-five dollars, but will be transferred to an account that it's called one time only, which is exactly what it's titled intended for. Um, I'm not sure why we had two separate accounts, but um we're gonna close the field trip account and transfer it into one time only. On the bottom of that, these are accounts that were set up as student activity accounts, but are um should be revolving accounts. And those are um fees collected for locks for the um lockers, band fees and athletic fees. So we're gonna close those student activity accounts out and then create revolving accounts and transfer those balances to there.
What is reso?
It's an excellent question.
Is that, is that what it is? Alright, that's what I thought, but you know, this, so it says student activity, but it's basically things used for student activities? Um, so going to uh gay street alliance, we don't have a gay street alliance in our school. Do we have any club that serves the same way or with the same uh purpose function? Cause I know that, you know, GSA is pretty active in other school districts, that's why I'm, I was wondering if we're closing something that may be useful.
So if you'd like, obviously you'd have to vote on these each separately, so if there's one like that one where you want some more research done just to make sure so that now we're not setting up another one, you know, a couple of months from now, that, that's certainly.
I seem to recall something um when, when my kids were at the high school.
I think it had been active in the past, but it has not been enrolled currently, um, or since I've been here. So it's inactive.
And that's not something that we can leave inactive, it has, something has to be done with it?
No, that's why I'm saying, you, we can vote, you guys can vote on these separately, yes, we can, we can certainly leave that and, and do some more um, investigating as to why or keep it there in case we wanna, you know, implement it again.
It seems as though we could potentially, you know, that, that could just be an account that ebbs and flows based on student need.
So a, a couple more questions. Band? What, do you know what that is?
So I believe that's um, I, I think for, uh, the fees are collected for use of instruments, but I'm not one hundred percent um certain on that. All I know is that it's not, so for student activities, the fees collected should be used on those students, right? So obviously for band, we can't trace that back, so it should be converted to a revolving account where then the band director can use that on the entire band. Um, what is collected, I am not sure.
So if I'm not misunderstanding, I may be completely off. Are we saying by accounts to close and create revolving accounts, we're gonna create revolving accounts for each one of these items?
Yeah, yep, they'll just be moved from a student activity into a revolving account, yep.
But a revolving account for locks, band and athletics?
Just gives you a little more flexibility.
So when we say accounts to close, what does that mean?
Student activity accounts, we have to close out those student activity accounts, you have to vote to move that money from.
To a revolving account.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, as long as it's used specifically for what it was intended to be used for.
Right, which, I mean, that's what we're gonna create, we're gonna create a band revolving account, locks and obviously there's already an athletics revolving account, so.
So I guess what I will do, I will ask for a motion for each one of these items separately. Um, for the, for the action that is uh described on top of that section, the first part being transferred to other student activity account and the second part is closing the account and creating a revolving account for the same purposes. Um, so let's start with the.
Wait, before we do, can I, I have one more question, I'm sorry, I, I must have missed it.
The question, is there an after the motion?
Oh, but you don't really want me doing that. So for, for the transfers, are, and it's going to the principal's holding account, but will those amounts that are being transferred in be earmarked in any way for these clubs or it just gets put into the general?
It just gets put into the principal's holding account.
So if, if a gay, straight alliance club starts, they would be able to go to the principal and ask for money then, they wouldn't have to have a new account established?
Unless the money's been spent on something else, I assume.
Well, but it wouldn't be just the hundred and fifty-six, they'd be able to go to anything then, right? If we're taking away that account, is that how that, how that works? Cause it's like we're taking the potential budget away from that, right? I guess I'm not sure what we're doing with the money.
So for, for any, I, I understand the hang up on the gay, straight alliance. Again, I'm, I'm only ta- getting this information from our student activities coordinator, which has notified me that there has been no activity in these top four accounts for uh some period of time.
Right, okay, so, so. Right, okay, so, so I guess I'm.
So yes, we could transfer that one fifty-six fifty into the principal's holding account, right, and then a group would like to start up that gay, gay straight alliance club and they could ask for two hundred dollars, yes, that would be at the discretion of the principal to.
Right, that's what I'm asking, that's because I just wanna make sure that if we're transferring this, that we're not taking away the ability of a new group but under the same name to be able to go and ask for money, like, I wanna make sure that we're not eliminating the ability of students to start a club to ask for funds by, by closing this account or transferring the money.
No, but typically for student activities, the money is raised through fundraisers or that type of, of alley to start their account. Again, if we happen to close this and somewhere down the line, it would, a group would like to, you know, reopen it, that's at the discretion of Steve or whoever the principal is at the time to say, yes, we took this back a couple of years ago, we'll give you this money back.
Okay, I didn't know, I, thanks for explaining that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jen.
Sorry.
No, that's good. Okay, so let's go one by one. Let's start with the uh top part and the first item is gay straight alliance.
So I'll make the motion to transfer that to the principal's holding account.
Second.
Any discussion? No questions? I, I wanted to leave this one alone.
I do too.
Until we determine that there is really, because knowing, you know, activity, how active these uh clubs are in other districts and I recall as Deanne did as well, that in the past they were also active in our district. So just to give them one more chance to claim it, if not, we can always come back and and do it, but again, this is my personal opinion, if the, the majority says, let's just go to principal's holding. You can feel free to vote that way, don't feel obligated.
Well, what my questions I think was partially answered, which was um, what happens with the money in the principal's holding account, I think it's pretty much up to the discretion of the principal. And that in some ways does kinda concern me, but so I'm okay if you wanna table this one too.
No, we can just vote and we can vote it down now and just we can bring it back again. We have that option, right? We, we don't just get to vote once a school year. Uh, the amount is not huge anyway to begin with, so let's just see that, but since there was a motion and a second, all in favor to transfer the amount of hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents from gay street alliance to the principal holding account, please say aye. All in, all opposed?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay, so we have, who's taking notes today?
This camera, the camera.
Alright, so I'll take my own notes. Okay, thank you. Uh, reso.
I'll make a motion to transfer the reso, uh student activity account to the principal's holding account.
I'm thinking Greece, but. What was it?
I'll second reso.
Pink lady.
Any question, discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor to transfer five hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents from uh reso account to the holding account, please say aye. Uh, third one is school apparel.
Can I read the dollar amounts too?
Yeah, it would be great actually, if you can.
So I make the motion to move the sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents from school apparel to the principal's holding account?
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Any questions? Uh, all in favor, please say aye. Do you remember who made the motion for GSA?
My did.
I did.
You did, okay, and who seconded?
I did.
Thank you. Alright, um, third one is school apparel, oh, we did that already. Alright, um, field trip account.
So I make a motion to transfer twenty-five dollars, this one I'm a little confused about, are we gonna open up on a one time only account on this one or?
There is a one time only account already.
Okay, so if we transfer twenty-five dollars from the field trip account to a one time only account.
One second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Alright, now going to the second part, uh, these are the accounts that we will close, but we will create revolving accounts under the same name for the same purpose. Okay, so let's start with locks.
I'll make a motion to close the locks account of eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents and open a revolving account of eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Uh, band.
I'll make a motion to transfer, close and transfer the band account of five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents and open a revolving account in the same amount. Five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Uh, finally athletics.
Is this one we have to open up revolving account or is this get transferred to an existing?
Yeah, you just vote to close the student activity account and we'll transfer to a revolving account.
But is there one already opened?
There is our athletics one already opened, correct.
So should we make the motion that way, that transfer to existing account, okay.
So, so I'll make the motion to close the athletics student activity account and open a rev- a revolving account in the amount of, or.
Transfer to the existing.
Move it to the existing athletics account for four hundred and seventeen dollars and nine cents.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, all in, um, any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Should we back up and do the student, the, instead of continuing the budget stuff and the?
That's what we're gonna do, yeah, we're not gonna do budget, so we're gonna stop there with our old business and then we're gonna go now back to uh public comment on school committee evaluation. So the purpose of this section is to have the public's feedback on what you are thinking about school committee's performance, in a quick nutshell. And that includes anything that's been done well, anything that's been messed up and uh done well and any opportunities or um suggestions that, you know, as members of the public, you may suggest we uh would consider uh in the coming year or years. So just let me finish Seamus and then we'll, we'll actually start with you since you've been waiting here for a while. Um, so what we'll do, we typically just, you know, kind of like to run around and we have the um the flip charts and we write things and all that, I think we can quickly take notes since we only have uh a few of you. Uh, first, thank you all of you for coming, really appreciate it, spending your time here. Um, other than that, if there are no questions, any questions on this side? Okay, so we'll start with you, Seamus.
Okay, um, I would, I would rate your performance as an A plus, every single one of you.
Stop right there, just. Yeah, no, I'm kidding, go ahead.
I had a couple other suggestions, uh, the um, I, my main concern is, and I know you guys are doing a great job, the uh the wellness uh program on at the high school, there was a caffeine ban. I can understand the reasons why, you don't want kids uh bringing caffeine and dunking donuts, but in my, in my opinion and correct me if I'm wrong, I kinda think that there, I kinda think the school shouldn't, especially the high school, I think that I've seen a lot of kids complain about the caffeine ban, I think, I think, I think an alternative is you know, serve, serve hot cocoa or hot chocolate, you know, to meet the juniors and the seniors, think about it. They are stressed out from sports, from work, from trying to get their SAT scores and their classes and all their homework on time, plus working. These kids are practically at the school, not just from seven AM to two PM, there's some students, but they're there. They barely get times themselves anymore, the only time they get times themselves is during the summer, like like during Christmas or something, I think, I think like maybe the kids like sixteen to um to like senior year, like junior and seniors, should at least have some forms of, you know, caffeine during the day. You know, but as long as it's provided by the school, not by, not by a parent or not by how it needs to be provided to the school, I think because you know, they're dead tired in the day, I remember being in that age and I was dead tired, you know, and that wasn't so long ago as it was for some, some other people, I'm not.
See, Robin, you're not alone, just an equal opportunity.
You know, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, put yourself in those kids' shoes. Imagine if, imagine this were, say, the seventies or eighties and, you know, the school board decided to take away, you know, soda or
Or smoking area.
You know what I mean, or vodka, or cologne area, or cologne area, cause that did sugary things. Imagine how you would feel, put yourself in their shoes for one second. I know I'd be pretty mad, but at the same time, cause I, Mrs. uh, Mrs. Mason, uh, Me- Meziak, or her name was she was pretty, you know, rotten uh to me. And, you know, and that's, and I don't mean to insult her if anything, she's not TV, I just, she really scared me and I'm sorry to say this if you're still alive. But I think, my point is, I think the kids should have some sort of caffeine beverage provided by the school, I think that is a compromise. Because, you know, those kids are stressed out, you don't want, you don't want your students sleeping on their desk. You know, if they have, if they like work a long night in Cindy's or they lie or anywhere. You get my point?
Yes, thank you, Seamus.
I'm curious what, what led to this caffeine ban?
So, um, it was part of the wellness policy review, um, and a committee of staff, parents, um the nursing staff uh really took a look at the entire wellness policy um and that was one of the recommendations. Um, I think caffeine um has taken on um new forms that are very concerning to adults that are working with kids, uh much like vaping. Um, these high energy, low do- um, small dose, high energy, um are very dangerous and so it's very difficult to manage um that in a, in a school setting. Um, so, uh, I think looking at the research around uh caffeine related illness, caffeine related deaths um from these uh types of uh, uh drinks and things. Um, I think it's also part of the goal of the wellness um committee and the wellness policy is really to have us at all times thinking about the wellness of students, um.
So, could we potentially do, you know, have a soda machine, uh, uh, you know, God forbid, a soda machine on, on campus that is stocked with, you know.
We can't provide that.
No, is it, is it because it's state or federal or because of our wellness?
Federal.
USDA.
What about the suggestion of offering coffee at, you know, ten minute breaks or something?
So we've talked about and we're gonna, um, and I'm not sure this is the forum for this, I think maybe, you know, bringing the wellness folks in the high school um and have, letting them talk about their work uh with students and coming up with some alternates and some compromise, um I think would probably be really beneficial for everybody.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So, thank you for uh coming and uh raising that. I agree with you that we should bring it back to the uh wellness committee because, you know, they thought a lot about this and brought it up. And the primary concern was the student's well-being, not necessarily, this is not a punishment or anything uh for anybody. And um whenever stuff like this comes up and I mentioned to you earlier that, you know, I just tried to go and do my own research and look at some papers on the scientific side, on the opinion side and all that stuff. So there are pros and cons that are raised on both sides, it seems to be that the uh primary concern is the level of intake which you, we can't control, I mean, you, you know, how, what are we gonna do, just uh, is it eight ounce or six ounce and just chase everybody and do that? Uh, but some people say, you know what, there are some more recent research that show that caffeine, you know, uh can help certain things, some others say it's bad for performance, bad for stomach, bad for uh sleep deprivation. Because, you know, it starts affecting younger bodies much later in the day and that's when they, you know, they may need to go to sleep, so I'm just throwing all these things because even a simple reading after Googling a few of these papers uh brings up so much uh information, some of which uh conflicts with each other. Uh, it, it, I think it would, it would behoove us to bring it back to the wellness committee and, you know, share them uh what we heard and then, you know, they can, they can take a look at it and bring it back to us. Cool, anybody else?
Uh, I would like to mention the joint meetings that you've had, not only with the select board, but with the finance committee. And um I do know that you have plans to continue those meetings. It's made this committee more transparent in the community and I think that helped tremendously when town meeting came around and you needed votes. That, you had done the preliminary work and it wasn't one committee against another. It was truly a joint committee and when you had the um chair of the finance department saying that they supported the um, the votes, that made a huge, huge difference in how people voted and their perception of what was happening. Because in the past, it hasn't always been a, a mutual admiration society. It has been you against them. And by having those joint meetings and being more transparent and answering their questions, which I know you have done all along. But them truly feeling like they got the information they wanted and they've been looking for all along. It's made town government a friendlier thing, not a um they can't have it cause we need it. It just, I admire you all for doing that and those committees also.
Thank you, thanks for saying that, and uh I like the way you wrapped it, cause it said mutual thing. Uh, at the end of the day, we don't know everything that is happening elsewhere uh either, so it's a good thing for us to hear you know, other perspectives, other suggestions and all that, that's the way, that's the way it should work, it took us a little while to get there. But that's the thing, just it's similar to that conversation around that article that we had earlier, that, you know, when you try to change uh a culture that's, you know, that's been there for a while, the way we behave, the way we think you know, it takes a lot of investment and I would not just take complete credit for it, uh, for the, for the school committee, I would say that it was really uh small steps, baby steps on, on e- everyone's part to be able to get there. I would also say that uh probably, at least because I know the school committee from our perspective, there's a lot more to be done. Uh, we, this is, this, this just, you know, starts uh a good dialogue with every, everyone else. But there's a lot more to be done, I mean, from our perspective, everything that happens uh with the school committee, the actions that we take, whatever we talk about, whatever we consider, we try to make sure that everybody knows about it, so that they don't think when they come to the town meeting or these meetings, that there is something that they do not know, they are not privy to, we wanna really get we envision this committee to get to that point, uh regardless of who's sitting uh around this table. So thank you for that, thank you for sharing that. Deanna?
So after Robin's comment, I guess I would just ask, um, what is the timeline for this year's budget? Cause I, I, I do think as well that everyone's trying to work in concert. And I know one of Chris's big concerns is that he doesn't feel that he was always getting enough statuses. You know, from the school at the right amount of time when he gets like a, a pulse. Not, not a finalized budget, but a post-budget, a tentative budget, kind of speaking to what Jen was talking about, you know. You plan for something, but it may be less dollars or more dollars, right, or situations may come up or arise that aren't originally accounted for, so that we don't have such a large gap. And then my question, and I know I've been asking this question in the last three years. And then my question, and I know I've been asking this question near three years, so I apologize for those of you who have heard it from me in the past. There seems to have been a shortfall right along for quite some time in the budget. And I'm just wondering, how are we going to address that at the school committee level this year? So, you know, maybe we could just get it on ballot and handle it once and for all forever?
And can you help us understand what you mean by that? What are we gonna have on the ballot?
So, for the last couple of years, you always go in and please correct me if I'm wrong, for those of you who have been party to that. Um, there has been a lot of shortfalls, so we always have to go into the override, right? And it was my understanding, based on the amount of time that Chris generously sat down with me and explained the budget and the whole process to me. And honestly, I was ignorant on the whole, how everything worked in round two before that. We have to get signatures on the ballot, it has to be voted on. And then it could be earmarked, so that we don't have to go through this process.
You're talking about override?
Yes, we don't have to go to the override every single year. We can actually ask for the monies to be put in. And it was brought up again last year as well.
Yes. So, we learned something odd about that, right? Because it's only the one year that it's earmarked. And then after that, it's really not necessarily going to come to the school. It's just the way that they've marked the three oh five. Isn't that what they were saying?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Right, so instead of going through this entire process, and Chris can actually speak to this more fluently than I, if we ask for this money to be added to the budget for the school, if we all kind of agree that it's been a shortfall, okay, that's why we have to keep going through this, that then we don't have to be going and hitting up that slash cash account, the appropriate name for this.
Diana, I apologize, but you're not Destrom anymore. What is your married last name? I completely blanked.
My current last name right now is Collier, whether it will remain that, I'll let you know.
Oh, sorry. I just, I was, I put it, would you like me to leave it as Diana Destrom in my notes? I'm so sorry, I had no idea. It's open mouth, insert foot.
So, that's, that's the eternal question. So, you know, there, there is really no harm in raising it and discussing it. And this is what we're gonna be starting to discuss, uh, shortly. But before I give you my, uh, version of what I think, uh, I wanna turn it to Adam first since, um, do you guys know Adam?
I haven't seen him in the hallway.
So, just a quick introduction, um, Adam is our new business manager. So, all these, uh, questions around budget and finances and, uh, some of the activities that involve, uh, finances, they're all now, um, under, uh, Adam's purview. So, I will ask you, as far as the timeline and what, you know, what, uh, you're envisioning as far as what we're gonna be doing in the near future.
Yep, so the timeline for, timeline for FY twenty, um, I've already started some preliminary work. Um, myself, Emory and Mike, um, have formed a budget subcommittee that will meet. We're still trying to get our calendars straight. Um, I, I would say probably the first meeting would be in November, um, to kinda start planning and, and, and kinda setting the groundwork. Um, and then we'll meet once or twice a month through, um, the beginning of the new year. Um, so, and, and I think, more importantly, what I'm about to say is gonna answer both of your questions, is the communication between myself and the school department to the town and particularly Chris. Um, I'm trying to work on that, um, communication. I know in the past, there's been a lack of communication, which has been a big problem for the whole budget process. Um, so, that's an ongoing, um, process that we're going through. But I'm gonna be open with Chris, I'm gonna be, we're gonna be transparent with Chris. Um, and I think once that communication gets better, um, we'll both have, myself, Chris, the committee and Chris, will have a better sta- understanding of what each other wants throughout the process. Um, but I hope to have Chris, a, a preliminary budget, I would say, February, March at the very latest. But that wouldn't be the first time he would know what we're gonna ask for in the budget. He'll, he'll know, as we meet, he'll kinda know what, what we're gonna look for, for next year's budget. Um, but communication is a big part of both of your questions and we're working on that. Um, I think it's gotten a lot better compared to where we've been in the past. Um, but we have a lot more to do. Um, but that, that will, the communication part of it will play a big role in, um, how the FY twenty budget is built.
We, uh, didn't you come up with a state, based on the state's framework for, um, having joint meetings and?
Right, and I, my, my thought was that it was going to be adopted by the, um.
Bylaw committee.
Bylaw committee, thank you. Um, but I did lose track of where they ended up.
It's still, it's still being discussed, so I don't think they have lost sight of that, but, uh.
Right, there was a lot of work that went into the process, um, and I think there was agreement. Um, I'm just not sure that it's, um.
So, regardless of what happens, we, we already decided a couple of years ago that we wanted to have, uh, at least three meetings per year. You know, the kinda meetings that, uh, Robin mentioned. Uh, there was even suggestion, a suggestion, can we do it quarterly? The only reason why we did not say quarterly, because summer months are pretty much, you know, quiet months. But there is really no harm in, in, uh, considering all that. Uh, as far as how we're gonna approach the budget, as, uh, Adam said, we wanna really start that process a lot sooner. So that by the time we get to that, you know, January, February timeline, at least we have something thing as to what, you know, what, what's gonna, uh, uh, what we're looking at and what's gonna come out of the budget. It's not gonna be final by no means, but, you know, we're gonna be, uh, working, uh, uh, on the, on the, uh, earlier side of the calendar. So, we just formed this committee that Adam talked about, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. And the idea is that we get into these conversations a lot sooner, but also we bring it back to the full committee for their opinion and then be able to, uh, inform the decisions based on what the full committee, uh, wants to do. Uh, as far as the, the shortfall, I, I, I want to hold off on that only because of, you know, how, um, we're hoping things, uh, will shape up this year. One of the drivers of that, as you know, uh, uh, every year is the enrollment. Before you guys came in, we were talking about the enrollment and we have about, uh, thirty-nine, uh, more students than were reported last year to the state. So, that means a combination of residence and school choice and, you know, uh, uh, but it's, that means, uh, additional revenue that we may be looking at. Uh, and there are, because we have Adam now, we have the opportunity to look at any other efficiency that may exist in the school district that we may not, we were not able to look at before. Uh, it can be in any shape and form and stop me if I'm going, uh, off here. Uh, it, it is really finding new ways of financing certain items or funding certain items to, uh, whenever, you know, uh, Adam gets his hands on everything that exists in the, uh, in the district and better understands how things work, uh, to, uh, looking into, uh, more grants that may come our way. You're probably, if you're watching, uh, the, um, the school committee meetings, not huge, but there were many, uh, grants that the school district already applied to and just brought back that helped with some new curriculum. Uh, hopefully, when we wrap up the school project, Robin already has some grants to, uh, uh, to bring horticulture.
Horticulture.
Uh, into this, uh, building. So, we are starting to think differently in terms of our budgeting. But more importantly, in, uh, our dialogue with the town should, as I mentioned, should get better and better because we really wanna start these conversations earlier, so that when we get to, you know, the first town meeting, nobody says, hey, you know what, this is the first time we're hearing these things that we're talking to us about. There should be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, I, I just think that having Adam full-time, I think helps the whole process be more effective and efficient, so.
Just give me one second. Anybody else who wanted to say anything on that?
I was just gonna, I wanted to comment on a little bit what Diana said and Robin talking about the group meetings, um, thinking about budget. Um, we've, we have also organized a whole other big committee. We've been calling it kind of Go Granby unofficially. And it's members of school committee, finance committee and select board working together to solve long-term problems in, in town, not just for the school, but for the town as a whole. Um, so that speaks to kind of budget for long-term, but it also kinda helps support the ongoing relationship between the two committees. Because now you've, we're three committees, because now you have three groups of people who have one common goal in mind and we aren't, the stressors of funding an entire town isn't present. So, we're able to work together on something completely different together and relate to one another in a completely different way. And it's been really interesting to see us all sit around at a table together with our eyes on one goal, working together in really different way. It's been, and I, I think it's just supportive of all of the ways that we are gonna be working together. Just having that, those kinds of converse, friendly conversations and laughing together at a table, um, talking about the future of Granby. And it's been really hopeful and very positive and, um, just been a really great opportunity for us.
When is that meeting?
So, we are waiting for the next meeting to be scheduled at this point.
We started it in the summer.
Yeah, and we've broken up into smaller subcommittees, we're studying other, anyhow, it's just another way to support this, this relationship that I think all three committees are committed to improving. And that's really what the feeling is. I think for the first time that we have consensus on, at least we have something that we wanna fix, which is great.
And it started with your joint committee meetings.
Yeah, I agree.
And then, and going forward, that is great for this town.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, we expect that to happen at all level.
It is something the school committee has been talking about since I've been on. Um, the idea that we have a short-term revenue problem and we have, uh, a long-term revenue problem that's more an issue that the school districts can't solve. Um, so, it does feel like, you know, we are finally getting on the same page and working more collegially, if you will, um, to try and solve the, the long-term issues.
So, it's, it's happy with whistle and. Seamus, you got something?
Uh, yeah, I had to add actually, the, uh, field, uh, the field, um, like some, like, like if, say like, s- say, like, like the field, is there any way we could, um, is there any way, like, I work for the Granby Booster Club by the way. And we are, we have always like, uh, I was wondering if you guys had any money for like, um, if we could ever have a town vote for like, you know, for lights, you know, when they're, for the games they're playing soccer. Like say, somebody want, like, for national night out or something, when they have the senior night or something for soccer. We should be able to put up lights for like one day or two and then take them down. If the town could vote on that, would that be something you guys be interested in, like, like just like, uh, you know, like, uh, the, the Booster Club, we got in trouble a couple of years ago.
You did?
We, uh, we had put, yeah, because we had put lights, like over by the, uh, confessions stand. And we, and Rob Sheldon said we had approval or whatever, I don't, I forgot who the guy was, I don't think it was you, Rob, but. But I remember, I remember Sue and somebody else had gotten in trouble, I don't mean the Ron, you lost.
You know, by the time you're done, you're gonna name the whole town. They're gonna shut down the school committee, bro.
No, I need.
No, I'm kidding, you're just, go ahead.
No, I think, I think we should have lights for, for a national, not for national.
So, that's a, that's a great, great question. And we, I think we talked about the fields at, at our last meeting. So, it's something that we really want to have, uh, a plan around and look in, into the fields. We did not talk, talk about the, uh, lights, but you know, why not? If, uh, but you're right that the town has to approve if there will be lights, uh, especially with our lights.
And, and plus the people on Maximilian Drive, which is the town, if, if the people in the areas like, like, such as Jennifer Drive, Maximilian Drive and surrounding in the, the house across the street, which is, uh, the Fa- Subowski's Farm. Uh, if, if they're okay with it, you know, and the town is okay with it, why not? It's not gonna hurt anyone if it's on for a few hours.
Yeah, if we do it for, you know, but again, this is gonna require a lot more conversation than, uh, than here. But thank you for, for bringing that up.
We also should measure the, like, you know, the grounds, uh, we also, we also should measure the gra- the, the grass, like, see if it's level and there's dirt and stuff and see if we could do that.
Yes, and that is what we talked about last time, that, how we keep the, uh, fields, how we, yep, absolutely. Thank you, Seamus.
You're welcome.
I would just also like to commend you guys for the work that you've done and echo what Robin said. I think transparency, uh, communication and the cooperation that I've seen in the past couple of years, um, it is to be committed in a small town, it can be very difficult. And the communication piece is very difficult. Um, I see more and more on social media, which is great, but I also see other avenues of communication, which a town like Granby is very important. There's a lot of misconceptions that grow very quickly here. And those perceptions of what you wanna kind of squash moving forward. So, I think the direction that you're going in is fabulous. And I'm glad to hear you all feel that, you know, there's more work to be done, um, because I think there's more people on board.
Thank you, Lee. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, you guys, you guys wanna hear, so let, let, let us share all that with you. So, right before I came here, I stopped by home and I was telling folks that, you know, it's a, it's a yellow envelope and, you know, I said, oh, that must be a subpoena or something. So, I opened two envelopes, by the way. The first one had the card in it. It says, "Thank you," it's from the, uh, fourth grade, uh, with their signatures and with their little notes and all that. And I opened the other one, I did not know what that was, but I figured that it was gonna be something similar, since I opened that one. All letters from the third grade students. Uh, so I will, I will give a shout-out to the members of the, uh, school building committee because these are all addressed to the school, uh, members of the school building committee. Uh, and they were, they're telling how much they appreciated people being there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony and they're telling us what they like about their new, new school, you know, the gym, the library, uh, there was one air conditioner.
Strawberry milk. I appreciate it.
Stuff, strawberry milk and all that stuff. So, it is always, it is always good to hear from everyone, but especially from those who, you know, who are the subject of our affection and all the work that we're trying to do collectively as a town. So, it's, it's awesome. Anything else before we go back to our regularly scheduled program? Okay, thank you very much, all of you, for coming, really appreciate it. If you wanna stay, feel free to stay, uh, uh, we're just gonna continue, otherwise feel free to leave. So, we're gonna go back to, uh, budget FY eighteen.
So, um, obviously, the three of us didn't get a chance to meet last week like we were supposed to, so, um, we're gonna hold off on that until we reschedule and finalize that. Um, and for nineteen.
And it was because we had, uh, two family emergencies.
Yeah, some extenuating circumstances, correct, yep, yep, it wasn't out of the, just lack of wanting to meet, yes, that's, that's an excellent point. Um, and then two thousand nineteen, so I reported on that last meeting. Um, so I think my plan was to, um, report on the, at least FY nineteen in the second meeting of the month. Um, but I know since we didn't have a meeting, Columbus there, we had no school, another meeting got pushed up, we kinda got off. So, what I'll do is I'll report out on nineteen in the first meeting of each month going forward. So, I'll report out on nineteen in our next meeting, which is the first of November, I believe, and I'll just keep that, that going.
Yeah. So, let me tell you this, however, that's, that's fair. I mean, I think we said that the second meeting of every month, we would do this.
Yeah.
But if there is anything that comes up, and I suspect that because we're gonna have the FY eighteen conversation, there will be something that we can share, you know, we're not really locked into a certain meeting. We can always have those conversations.
And I think in the effort of, you know, clarity and transparency and communication, we're, we'd like to restructure the agenda so that Adam has a section, uh, that will be business and facilities update, um, or report. And then whatever is going to be discussed will be listed as agenda items. Instead of this sort of umbrella and we don't really know unless we dig into what's here. That way, it should be very clear what Adam will be reporting on, whether it's budget or facilities or updates or changes or transfers or any, I think, changing that agenda, um.
So that we are more clear and not only to the committee, but also to the public.
That's, that's a great idea, i- in fact, since we are now creating our, uh, agenda, posting and creating the agenda earlier in the week. We, um, we can post our agenda on the website, on the school site. And I can post it on the face, school committee Facebook page as well, so that everybody has at least some idea what's gonna be discussed, and if they're interested, they can, they can come and join us.
Absolutely.
Uh, okay, the, I think the only thing that was of interest last time when we talked about FY nineteen, and this is just my continuing curiosity, if you can. Uh, dig into it, that would be great, the run rate was different between last year and this year, and somewhat dramatically. So if we can find out what is causing that, what it means, you know, especially since Diana brought up, you know, shortfall and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
What does it mean for us this year, that would be great, and FY eighteen, we're gonna have some things to share after that one as well, so.
Yes, yep, and actually, that's a good point, um, I followed up with the auditors again, um, really.
Oh, yeah, I saw your email.
Really early this morning, um, to see where we were at with that, uh, report. I hadn't heard back from Doug, who was the auditor, so then I followed up with their, I believe it's their office secretary, um. And we had a dialogue, so I'm hoping to get an answer regarding that sometime soon.
Okay.
Um, but I'm, 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 I'm still trying, again, as we talked last time, they have everything as far as I know, from us and from the town, so I'm not sure at this point. What the holdup is, I don't wanna speculate, but I'm just gonna, I'll keep reaching out to, to make sure.
Yeah, I saw your emails earlier too, just when you were emailing Doug and asking, so thank you for that.
So, some of the, and, some of the, some of the difference in the, uh, the run rate between last year and this year, it wouldn't account for. The whole thing, but remember, we had some, some unanticipated expenses that we were funding.
Right, so there was, a majority of that difference between this year and last year is sped-related, um, costs, which are the unanticipated costs, correct, yep.
Yeah. And you know, it's possible that, you know, going to the other conversation, and the way you are looking at a budget.
Mm-hmm.
And how we used to look at the budget, maybe, maybe different than this, this was, okay, so we'll find out, instead of speculating, we'll find out about that.
And just one more quick thing, um, I received this morning the enclosure for the donated AED, so we ordered and got the enclosure that the AED will go in. Outside, um, we're not a hundred percent sure where it's going, we think on the snack shack, but we don't know, but we got that enclosure, um, and that will be mounted and then the AED will be put there. As soon as possible, we put a work order in for them to install it.
So, since you brought it up, a question, we voted for that, it's all set and all that, and we said outside.
Yeah, yep. Yes.
But I'm assuming outside is when there is activity outside, is it, you know, in cold winter months, are we gonna leave it out there, is it the purpose of it?
So, yeah, that, that concern came up, the, the, the case protects it up to, I think, minus four degrees, we talked about, but yeah, and. I'm not, I won't make that decision, I'm assuming, um, you know, the nurse Nancy or even Ally, the athletic director can, can talk about, but yes, I would say if we're gonna get some severe weather, yes, it would certainly.
Okay.
It would certainly come in.
Yep. Alright, thank you, any questions for Adam?
Actually, sorry, I do have one more, I think I made a list. Food service contract, so we got it signed back from Chartwell's, um, we just got it back from Fred today. He looked over it, everything's all set, so now Cheryl can sign it and it'll be executed.
Since you opened the door to Chartwell's. Since you opened the door to Chartwell's, when do you think they're gonna come and visit us for the first time and, and let us know?
So when would you like?
Um, this is October, I'm thinking probably sometime in November would be, would be great, is that, that'll give them two months or so to.
Yeah, I think, I can, yeah, so I. Yep, so I have monthly meetings with, uh, Ken and Mike's been in on a couple of them, so I can, uh, when I meet with him for this month, I can, um. Make sure that they're at the November fifth meeting.
I just wanna make sure that there's no surprises.
For the second one, yeah, well, well, I'll talk with them, but yes, yep, yep, certainly.
Emery, did you see the finalized contract, Chartwell's?
Actually, we signed the finalized contract.
So, yeah, so, so, yeah, so the way Chartwell's operates, it's, yeah, so, yep, yep, it's.
Okay. Just trying to make sure that we put an eyeball on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, of course. So I signed that contract a while ago.
Yes.
I know that.
But then we were told that, well, it can't go directly to a Chartwell, it has to go to state first and state has to approve, and then sends to Chartwell's and all that.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I've been asking, did they change anything, because we had modified a couple of those.
Right. Right.
So no, that, that's still the same contract that we signed, and so we've seen it and reviewed it and changed it and then signed it and, uh, and then went to the state.
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No, thank you for asking that. Alright, so, um, are we expecting McDuffie and.
Yes, so, um, they've returned their packets of information, um, Kathy is on vacation, so as soon as she gets back, she will put it in your folder, I believe they are.
Children's first and time soon.
Invited for November fifth, um, but have not confirmed yet, uh, children's first, I believe, is all set to come for the, uh, November fifth. Um, I still have to check with, uh, Steve.
Um, and just going back to the old business, A, the, did we talk about having a, uh, workshop or a, for the.
Oh, yeah, that's what.
That's why it's there.
That we beat.
Yeah, there was supposed to be like a doodle, being sent out or dates.
Doodle.
I forgot to doodle, sorry, yes, I will send out a doodle. Would you remind me to send out a doodle?
Sure.
So Cheryl will send out a few suggestions for, for a date, for us to do a retreat slash workshop on, uh, on our goals.
Yes.
Goals.
Yeah, we need to.
And we wanted that for an evening, and you had given me the dates.
Yes.
Yes.
You put me about, three hours, did we say three hours?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, I did not remember. Yes, I don't think if you get the superintendent and the district draft goals and the strategic objectives done, it is done and, um. Not sure you'll need all of the three hours, but, um.
Okay. No, the shorter the better, yeah, I just didn't want.
Three hours will, and you have draft goals from last year, some of which will, depending on, um, when you meet, maybe further along.
Right. Yeah, this is gonna be very different from our workshop last year, because that was our first one. Yeah, well, that was just learning how to make goals. Exactly, exactly. Now we're professionals.
Yes.
Well, I don't know if I go that far yet. But I like the way you think.
Alright, going to, uh, standing reports.
Oops.
Starting with our superintendent's report.
Could we do something else?
No.
Yeah, we can, do we have anything from the collaborative, so, alright, we have the collaborative, we have a lot.
Um, we had our meeting on the twenty-sixth, um. Big part of it was just, um, restructuring, cause it was the first one for the new year. Um, their year-end audit is underway, it was a little bit of a, it was actually a major concern because they were so far over budget, um.
Over budget?
Yeah, over budget. Um, and it didn't look like there was any way they were gonna bridge the gap and, they wouldn't commit to anything, but it said, um. The numbers are going off to the auditor and now it looks like, um, that gap is gonna be much smaller, that's all they would say. A lot of discussion was on, on Bill's goals, um.
Bill's the executive director?
Yeah, and his goals and the timeline for his, um. So his performance stuff, um. And that kind of led me to a lot of things that I've been thinking about with regard to the collaborative, it's like. If there's some way I can understand what it is that Granby gets from the collaborative. Uh, I know, all I can tell from what I'm, what I'm given there is we have two students in Heck Academy, I think. Based on the information that they've given us, uh, but I don't know what other services that we, we get from them. But I read through all the documents, it's like Beltratown this, East Hampton that, and I just don't know what they're doing for us.
So, um, Bill comes and does a presentation, um, we are actually, um, one of the more prolific users of CES, um, because of our size. Um, so in a nutshell, we get our professional development, um, a lot of our special education's, um, professional development. We co-write our, um, English Language Learner Federal Grant Title Four with CES. Um, we, as the collaborative of superintendents, do advocacy, um, through, uh, the CES, uh, with Bill. Um, we, I'm trying to think of some of the other things.
Our after-school program.
Uh, correct, our SOAR program is run through CES, um, but he actually does keep the numbers of participants, um, and so. Uh, I can have Bill come and do that presentation for us again.
Yeah, I just don't see us listed on the accomplishments and, and the things that he's talking about, so my assumption was we were using them for, for the professional development and some of the licensure stuff that.
Right.
Kind of done, you know, behind the scenes to.
Well, and part of it is, I think that the school committee has made a concerted effort, uh, with, uh. The school department to create a continuum of services, so we have an autism program. If you look at some of our surrounding communities, they do not, so they are using CES as their autism, um, placement. Um, we have social emotional learning, um, at Granby Junior Senior High School, um, so we have that classroom. And it was your goal to create a continuum of services so that Granby students didn't have to leave Granby to receive those services. Our surrounding communities don't have those programs, so they're sending more students, um, out of district, off-campus. To, uh, CES or out-of-district placements, so, I mean, in terms of our student use, I would agree, and I'm very proud that we don't use. Um, CES as our first, uh, placement for students, we try to keep students home as much as we can. Uh, and so CES is often our second, um, reach, um, and otherwise we're going to other, other out-of-district placements.
Yeah, and that, and that's fabulous, I just, I just wanted to make, make sure I understood.
Yeah. Yep.
What, what we were doing with them.
Yeah, so you're absolutely right, we do not look at CES for placement of students, that is not our primary goal in working and being part of the collaborative with CES.
Okay, and I, I bring this up because they're now trying to devote time to every meeting. To go around the table and bring up discussions on, on things that, that, that other districts are struggling with, and if there's anything that. We, we feel that we can benefit from, um, let, you know, let me know and I can kind of bring that up.
Sure.
But I'm sure you have the same thing with the, with the superintendent calls or, you know, you know, those meetings.
Yep.
Um, and then the last thing that they, they talked about is they brought a woman in who was talking about the new. Um, the new emphasis, I think, starting next year with the social studies and, um. I guess citizenship.
Civics, yep.
Yeah, civics, um.
Yep.
And how, how this year they're looking at what the new mandates are gonna be and, and trying to figure out how to, how to implement them for next year. Um, and I guess there's, they're not planning on putting this on an MCAS test, it's gonna be something like project-based, so.
A service learning project, yep.
I just kinda wanna bring that up now, and it doesn't look like there's gonna be any funding for these new requirements either, so.
Sure. Of course, of course not.
I'm sure you already know more about it than I do, but, uh, just wanted, that was, that was a topic that was brought up. And, um, somehow I didn't move back fast enough when they were looking for volunteers and I'm on the signing committee for warrants now, so.
There you go.
But that was, that's the update from that.
Honestly, that, uh, I, I, I'm kinda surprised that it, it took. The collaborative or the state or, you know, whoever else to push people to better understand, uh, and learn about civics. You know, it used to be part of, part of, you know, our learning and suddenly it just went away, probably, uh, uh, uh. Whatever we are seeing nowadays is a reflection of us kinda walking away from that, uh, civics curriculum as well, so.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm glad that they are putting some emphasis and we, we've been talking about that, you know, community service and stuff, but bringing civics. It would be actually an interesting thing to hear what, what we are planning on doing on, on that front as well.
Right.
Yeah, from my understanding.
Right at the moment?
Definitely not.
Yeah, from my understanding, this is not just a high school thing, this is from.
No, and they've actually backed away, um, from the requirement, so there's a little bit of unknown right now, so.
Yeah.
We're talking, but not really sure what's coming, um, so. Again, I think the no funding piece has a lot of people concerned and so that's kind of come back around to the, to the legislators and, you know, um, policy advocates, so. Kind of a wait and see, so.
But it is good to know and fully appreciate, like, I read these updates and there's like a trillion things going on in. A thousand different directions and I'm like, but I don't see Granby and how it fits in here at all, I just needed a little bit of help in figuring out the perspective, so.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, and quite frankly, a lot of, um, a lot of the direction that CES may go in isn't a need in Granby, um, so, um, trying to think, um. Recently, when East Hampton had, um, a series of events with students being, um. Uh, basically, you know, uh. Discriminatory against each other, they were wearing the, um, uh, there was a. There's a situation where a student wore a provocative T-shirt, they were asked to take it off, it became this, um. Really big iss- issue for East Hampton, so CES stepped in and did a lot of social justice work and that's not anything that we. Um, could tap into, we were doing our own work in social emotional learning and developing our own process and procedures, it wasn't something that we really needed at the time. But that became a big emphasis of what CES was doing, so there are times when it meets our needs and then there's times when it doesn't.
Well, that was, that's what prompted me, cause I'm reading all of this stuff and the direction they're going and I'm sitting there saying, that doesn't really help us all.
Right, exactly.
We're already doing this, or we've already done that.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
No, that's, that, that's good, actually, I like it, you know, you know that I like what the collaborative is trying to do, but at times it feels like, just like in this case, the East Hampton case. They are there to help when the need arises, but they need to probably be a little more proactive and understand what the needs are, I mean, if Granby's expected to really collaborate or use more of their services. What are the type of services that we may need, that's the way I would expect any organization to think, then there will be an opportunity. And some of the things that they had, which when I was there, I thought was, would be great, like the website services and this and that, happened to be, uh, not cost-effective, so that, you know, we couldn't jump on that.
Right.
So, you know, good conversations, but, you know, let's see where it goes.
You know. They're incredibly responsive, so for example, um, we're going to be offering through CES a joint professional development for, um, helping. Uh, students with anxiety in the classroom, and it's a joint PD with Hadley, Hatfield and Granby. Um, it's gonna be presented at CES by CES and the teachers will go there, so we have twelve, um, teachers participating. Hatfield has nine and Hadley, I think, has ten, so that's a new group of educators that are gonna come together. I'm in a small district like Granby, Had- Hadley, Hatfield, that's a great opportunity for sixth grade teacher to meet another sixth grade teacher, cause we don't really have that many and really talk about. How they're supporting students, um, so that's really how we use CES, is to sort of bring of our, um, slim resources together and have more impact.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Yep, and, and we asked for that, so Annie McKenzie and John Roberts, we got together over the summer and said, hey, what are you, what are your needs for, um, for professional development? And we all decided that social emotional learning and anxiety were, um, important, um, places where we needed support for staff. And so then we talked and, uh, met with CES and that's what we developed, so that's really how we use CES more.
And they, and they did, they did do some of that, um, they did bring in some, some member districts to have a con- have these types of conversations, what do you need from us? I just don't know if we were invited and, um, I did speak and say, I think you need to do more of that and be very responsive when people come up with things and not just. Try to go in your own direction, that's kind of what I wanna make sure that they weren't doing.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Um, going back to your report.
So I am thrilled to share, uh, my update with you today, uh. Granby, uh, was the host of our very first Unified School Day Games, um, and so we had, uh, through unified partners. Um, area schools, um, and special Olympians come on site and participate in, um, a whole range of activities with. Um, peers and, uh, with, uh, students with disabilities and really the goal is to. Um, move past barriers and perceptions that people may have, um, and really just have fun, um, and using sports as a vehicle to do that. Um, so there's more description there of, of everything that occurred, but it was, really was a wonderful day. And second to that, then we had the Unified Basketball, had their first game, um, and so, uh, I know that you had voted for that and we're just thrilled that. Uh, we were able to host the first basketball game and looking forward to more, so. It was, it's awesome, awesome for Granby, and somebody asked me what Granby gets, uh, for hosting, and I, I said.
Ah.
And I, I said, really what Granby gets, um, is for kids to understand each other. And kids to spend time together, and kids to really care for each other, um, and both ways, um, so it really was a remarkable experience for students.
Speaking of civics, right, so.
Right, yeah, exactly, yep.
I wanted to comment on the basketball, my son plays on the Unified Basketball team, um, it's the first time he's ever been able to play on a team. Um, ever, at thirteen, um, and I just, it was probably the best hour of basketball. I've ever had the opportunity of sitting through, if you have a chance to go to one of these games, you should go. It was just too, you know, as we played Chicabe, it was Granby against Chicabe, and the kids, um. Everybody rooted for everybody, every basket was cheered, every child, eh, the refs take time, it's. You know, they, they don't blow the whistle really loud, so the kids aren't freaked out by doing something wrong, it's every, everything is a teachable moment. Every, it was, it was just, I'm so happy that we have this here, and what it has already offered. You know, my son coming into school and with a smile, you know, because he feels like he knows the big kids now, because they come in and help. And so he, well, walks out of school kind of feeling like, you know, he's got big kids, you know, as friends, and it's just been really. Um, just in, in the few weeks that we've had it, I've just, I, it's just an amazing program, so thankful to Allison for. Um, seeking out the grant and bringing this to, to our school, it's awesome.
Yes.
Good stuff.
Is this on the website?
Not yet, but, um, I'm gonna do a story, uh, for the website and, uh, put the updates up.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alright, that's, that's awesome. Um, West Street Building Committee did not meet lately, uh, Policy Subcommittee.
We're meeting Thursday?
Okay.
Thursday, Tuesday, and next Thursday.
We have three dots.
Keeping busy.
Yes.
Um, Budget Subcommittee was scheduled to meet on Friday, but, uh, we had family emergencies, so we are looking to meet this week. Uh, either Thursday, Friday, those are the days that I may be available, uh, we're gonna get together and talk about, uh, FY eighteen wrap-up. And maybe by that time, you know, some miracle happens, and we get the, uh, audit report, and we get to look at it or something, you know. Um, Community Relations Subcommittee.
Yeah, so, um, Jen and I met briefly before tonight, um. There is a marketing strategy, kind of a brainstorming, in our shared folder. Jen and I are gonna be meeting again this week, um, to kind of clarify some of these and add some more, um. Structured ideas around goals, and policies and benchmarks, so that we have a, a good idea of where we should be focusing our energy. Um, and I basically, you know, we've kind of just have a brainstorming dump in here that we need to sort through. So we hope to have a more formal update for you in a couple of weeks.
Cool, awesome, thank you, I'm actually excited to hear that, that you guys were able to get together.
Yes.
Cause, uh, there, you know, as, as we heard, there is a lot in that connection, uh, with, with the, with our community. So, thank you both for that, appreciate it.
They started sending out the agenda and supporting materials, and, you know, ahead of time, but then after the meeting, they'll send out. Um, he always does a highlight section, it's like usually about three or four pages of stuff that they've been involved in. Do you guys want me to drop that in our, our folders, um, so that you can read it? I tried to hit the high points, but a lot of it really doesn't pertain to, to, to anything that will help us, so I, I generally have not, but it. And now that they're separating, I can, I can definitely drop that in the folder.
Yeah, that'd be great, Mike.
Yeah, please. Um, one. That's all we have on our agenda, for our next meeting. Uh, I received a message from a member of the Emmer's School Committee, and they are once again starting to talk about the Chinese, uh, conversion.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, school, and there's a, you know, there's a request to consider it for a conversation here as well, and, and, uh. Let our thoughts and opinions, uh, be known as a result. Uh, so if we can bring it to our next meeting for a conversation, and I will, uh, share with you and the committee whatever I received from her, and. If there's additional documentation, I will share that as well. Anything else? Okay, is there any items that you would like to include in our next meeting? You can always, uh, email, uh, Cheryl. Okay. So with that, we have an executive session, correct?
Yes.
Uh, we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part A-three. To discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session, so we will have a roll call, please.
Deanne Payne Rukowski, aye.
Jennifer Curran, aye.
Jennifer Bartos, aye.
Mike Simpson, aye.
Emery Evan, aye, thank you, and have a good evening.